Proclamations, unfortunately our Eagle Scouts weren't able to be in attendance this evening, so we'll pull those two proclamations. And the other item is under ordinances, Bill B-12-19. It's based for a first reading. That's the item for Trans Systems for the design change supplemental that we have discussed during the workshop. And I'd like to make that for first and second reading.
If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Okay. First one, Scully. Second one, Schaefer. Any discussion then? Say none on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Agenda is amended. Next item is assistance participation. We ask assistants come forward to the podium and their microphone and address the board. Do we have any assistants in attendance who wish to address the board this evening? Say none, move on to the consent agenda.
We accept the consent agenda.
Motion, Alderman Scully, do we accept the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver Totten. Any discussion? Say none, all the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Next item is proclamations that have been removed. Say no presentations, public hearings, previous business, or new business. We'll move on to ordinances.
Mayor B-12-17, second reading. It will be ordinance 2216, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Jackson County, Missouri for distribution of combat funds for fiscal year 2012. Second reading, ordinance 2216.
I move that we accept bill number 2216 for its second reading. Whoops.
1217.
1217, make it ordinance number 2216.
I motion Alderman Totten to approve bill 12-17 for its second reading, making ordinance 2216. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion? Say none, all the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
BB?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Five zero, mayor. Bill B-12-18, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Missouri State Highway Patrol for the use of the Criminal Justice Information Systems Network. First reading, Bill B-12-18.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-18 for its first reading and bringing it back for a second reading by title only.
I motion Alderman Totten to accept bill B-12-18 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman BB. Any discussion?
Mayor, when will we have that cost and connection fees? Will that be available, the information be available?
Yeah, and remember, keep in mind, we're already using C just, we've used C just for many years. This was a loss from the original contract, that's why we're doing this at the state's level, it was misplaced, so we're doing it. There will be a cost coming up when we get the live scan network online, if and when that happens with Kansas City Police Department. So, Oliver West, to answer your question with that, I'm hoping to see some preliminary figures very soon, but then, in actuality, and when we'll go live and get it working online, that's two other things though. It could be several months down the road. But I'll keep the board informed. But I'm telling you, it's probably not something that would, it's probably not going to even rise to the cost that necessarily bring out as an ordinance, because we're probably talking at a maximum ceiling level of about $2,500 max. That'd be for the first year, that's just startup cost, and it would not consist of anything like that the following years. Probably about 130 bucks a month or something like that, and that would include maintenance and everything on the system, but that's just, numbers getting tossed around right now.
Say none, all the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
Five zero, first, mayor. Bill B-12-19, first reading. It's on for both readings tonight, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to amend the agreement with Trans Systems for final design services for the I-70 interchange project. First reading, Bill B-12-19.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-19 for its first reading, bring it back for a second reading as emergency.
I motion Alderman Scully to accept bill B-12-19 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver Totten. Say none, all the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
Five zero, first, second reading, Bill B-12-19. It will be ordinance 2217. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to amend the agreement with Trans Systems for final design services for the I-70 interchange project. Second reading, ordinance 2217.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-19 for its second reading and make it ordinance 2217.
I motion Alderman Scully to accept bill B-12-19 for its second reading, make it ordinance 2217. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver Totten. Any discussion? Say none, all the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
Was that first reading?
Second.
Second. All of them, BB?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Five zero. Bill B-12-20, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the revenue forecasting services to real estate research consultants. First reading, Bill B-12-20.
I move that we accept bill number 12-20 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading as title only.
I motion Alderman Scully to accept bill B-12-20 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second? Oliver Totten. Any discussion?
Board may recall that Tom Tonico from Springfield, our financial advisor, came to discuss this project, the agreement that you have in front of you this evening, Alan's, the scope of services that they would follow to provide the necessary estimated revenue projections for retail, it doesn't just, it's not just for Green Valley, but it's different in our region to determine what the type of retail output is, and determine whether the TIP plan can reach the projections. It's a revenue projection and it's a market analysis, and it is in concurrence with the TIP agreement that we have with Mr. Loreno. He, Mr. Loreno has also reviewed this agreement, and this is a not to exceed cost. Is that what I have?
Not to exceed what cost?
Oh, it's sixty.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Is this strictly for the businesses over there with Mr. Loreno? I mean, this isn't just a blank.
No, this, it will provide, this contract will allow us to be able to use this firm for additional services should the boards have desire later date, but this is strictly for the TIP agreement that you have in place right now. So as Mr. Loreno brings agreements to the city and to the consultant, they'll be looking at what that type of services or that type of businesses, and then that's how they'll be able to do the research on it.
And it still comes before the board anyways, right?
Future ones do.
Yes.
Yes.
And we're looking at a similar cost each time?
No, it depends upon the size of the project.
All the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
Five zero, first, mayor. Bill B-12-21, first reading, it is on for both readings tonight. It is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with Midwest Pool Management for management of the Green Valley Aquatic Center for the 2012, 13, and 14 summer seasons. First reading, Bill B-12-21.
Do everyone stand, it's Alderman Headway.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-1 for its first reading and bring it back for a second reading with title only.
I motion Alderman Scully to approve bill B-12-21 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver Totten. Say none, all the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
Aye.
Four, or four one, approve BB, no. Second reading, Bill B-12-21, it will be ordinance 2218, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with Midwest Pool Management for management of the Green Valley Aquatic Center for the 2012, 13, and 14 summer seasons. Second reading, ordinance 2218.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-21 for a second reading and make it ordinance 2218.
I motion Alderman Scully to approve bill B-12-21 for its second reading, make it ordinance 2218. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver Totten. Any discussion?
The only, only thing I would like, is let's put it on our calendar, Mexico around, is I don't like these second readings for $91,000. You know, I mean, just, we can eliminate them, I mean, some I can understand, but it's a lot of taxpayers' money, and, but, just, second reading is what I don't like. If we could avoid them from now on unless they have to understand.
Everybody knows I think the same way, so this isn't called for, maybe a emergency reading.
At times, emergency readings have to happen. If we just had maybe a heads up prior and say that it will come up, I think, I don't think we would have had this discussion for, just kind of heads up, because sometimes it happens, we have no control.
Well, but please, as the board, what we could do this evening, I know that you're getting ready to pass this ordinance, and I think you need to throw monkey wrench into it, but what you could do is schedule a special meeting for next week, and we can meet next week. That would give you your second read, or even later this week, if you want to do a second read later on this week, you could reconvene.
But is that going to give you time to do like we were talking about today? Throw it out to bid and make this happen, but it's not going to, yeah, it's not going to happen, so.
Well, that's why I'm saying you could reconvene even later than this week, I think three days, if you wanted to reconvene one evening this week.
I mean, I don't have a lot of time, but I mean, I think it is what it is, I mean.
Well, I think it is what it is, but the bottom line is if, unless we have a need for some other, well, I pay you as a taxpayer money.
Yeah.
Just giving it off.
I'm just saying, I thank you for that, but I don't see why adding another word, a cost on top of that, because it's going to, the outcome's still going to pay us the same.
I mean, in this particular instance, I don't think we would get probably a second bid. I know when Blue Sprays did theirs, it was this company in a school district, and that was it. And our school district doesn't have any little aquatic sports, so they're not going to put a bid in on that. That, that's the reason Blue Sprays bid on that one, because they were using for their aquatic sports anyways. So I don't, I don't know if there's anybody out there who's going to give a second bid.
I just.
The future, the future.
Yeah, future comes, let's just stay aware of the second reads if all possible. Thank you.
All the floor please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
BB?
No.
Scully?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Four one, mayor.
Next item on the agenda is resolutions. Say none, move on to city attorney's reports.
Nothing to report.
Move on to city administrator staff reports.
Yes, I believe Luke Ambrose has a report.
Yes, we have our six annual victim rights golf tournament coming up, May of the 11th, which is the second Friday in May. We're going to still have it at Drum Farm, it'll be a morning event, and, you know, we've always had excellent participation in the past, and I think we're already seeing that as going to be echoed again this year, so, and hopefully, I know, I know Mr. Cook's got a team, he, I think he was the first one to pay, actually, thank you very much, and, and I know there's some others, and Arumi WS always puts a team in and whatnot, so, hope to see everybody out there, even if you can't play, you know, we always look for help and volunteers, and, and we just look for a successful year again, and hope we get your support, thank you very much.
I want to add something on that, but could I talk to Laurel tonight? Laurel Ogle was the victim, had one of them, and I work very closely with Laurel. You can see down here tonight, we typically meet before board meeting to prepare for court next week, and oftentimes she'll bring witnesses in to talk to me. But I was asking her tonight about the, the response to the tournament, and it's a little, it's always a little slow right now, but some of the things they do, the money that we raise, or that he raises, or whoever raises it, goes directly to the victim's services. Victims need emergency help, toiletries, gasoline for car, whatever it is, that's what the money's going, going.
Takes the point, and.
And it's, it's administered out of this city hall by a five-person review committee, and it's very, very, very well-staffed. Laurel is very conservative and considerate, so.
So is Kelly in Oak Grove, yeah.
And with Kelly in Oak Grove.
Yeah.
And they really do a good job.
They do. And I know Chuck Johnson's on that, one of our five member, four members, and he can tell you that they don't spend a dime of that money generally, it, you know, unless it goes to their review committee first, so, unless it's an emergency-type situation, but there's a ceiling on what they can spend without getting approval anyways, so, it's well monitored, and it's an excellent program, the money goes to a great cause, so.
It does.
Do they, for non-golfers that just want to come out and participate, rent golf clubs?
Uh, you know, the court, I don't know if the course actually rents clubs or not.
Some places have rentals.
They, they have, yeah, okay, yeah.
I'll tell you.
He gives mine. I think he comes to me and goes.
There's beverage carts and stuff like that that get run, so, you know, that's what's on the hill.
If he needs golf, we'll get him.
Okay. Thanks, Dewey.
I guess the C Y Rock still is after that, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right. You gotta keep that.
That's if they can find them.
We'll look for notes there.
There we go.
Aaron, are you going to post some of these flyers in some local businesses in town?
Yeah, absolutely, I believe we sent the, the chamber has the flyer, Jerry Bond is one of our volunteers on the committee, I know he's sent all the information out to the chamber to do an e-blast, and then we are, we'll get out there and get them up and posted as well.
I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
What times is it in Overland?
It's usually right after lunch, we have a lunch with the award ceremony, so it's about, about one o'clock, yeah, it starts about eight o'clock, it's a shot and start, they call it.
Wish you guys could do that on Sunday, it'd be a lot easier for some of us guys.
I understand, we've talked about changing it to weekends, the problem is, a lot of courses won't let you have tournaments on weekends, because that's when their regular business is, right?
Y'all said a lot of your golfers have regular weekend matches, they don't want to give up to a tournament right there, you know?
Yeah, but we're definitely, if you know people that want a team, please send them our way, and we'll, we'll get the flyers out there and whatnot, and if you hear of anybody that's interested, just let us know, and we can, we can send them the information. Thank you.
Only one other item to report, and we had previously stated that we'd hope to have a health fair bus in the city on May 2nd. Unfortunately, that, Center Point is needing to reschedule that, and we do not have a date as of yet from them, but as soon as we get a more current date from them and they're able to reschedule that, we'll let you know.
I actually have a board meeting there Wednesday night, I might be able to, like something, and pass that along for next meeting, so.
All right.
Okay, more of Alderman reports and comments, Alderman BB?
One thing, since I started on this board a couple years ago, I've always liked these tables not turned so close to the board, because that's kind of like, to me, when the public service go and share their concerns, I like to be able, where you can see them a little bit more, so please, hopefully, you won't keep turning the tables towards just the board, I think that's kind of a little bit not fair to the public, because not everybody really can hear through our system, I don't think that will, to know, but they can see, I think it's, it's a little more personal. The other thing is, I just want to wish everybody good luck on the campaign coming up, it's Sunday, it's Tuesday, and I just want to share everybody good luck. That's all I have, mayor.
Alderman West?
Nothing, I just got here.
Alderman Scully?
I made it to the school board meeting, their last meeting last week, and talked to them about bringing back resolutions for whenever they have any students that represent them, and I got a state level, and they'd like to see that come back and continue. They've already contacted Jamie with names, they already have a group, two, three groups, three different identities that they've represented, and I talked to Dr. Moss and him, and if the board would allow it, I'd like to be the liaison for the school board, and I'll start going to their meetings as well to keep you informed. I think we got, we broke, broke down the door, let's keep building a better relationship. And then the second thing, on the downtown overlay, I haven't been on all, you know, your thoughts or Scott's or Alexa's, but to me, after thinking about it, we still never give them an answer. They're wanting to get together, kind of talk, well, we want to get this, it's like, put it off.
Oh.
I'm sitting on the board, and I still never really got an answer for what they were asking and what we were given, so, maybe I need to be clarified as well as them.
Let me tell you what my thoughts were, I was going to talk to each of you afterwards and kind of run by you, but I wanted to get kind of my thoughts down a little bit more, but since you brought it up, I'll just go ahead and brainstorm with you right now. What I'd like to do is have another meeting with the group, invite them back to talk, not probably a work session, but just more as a committee group, and listen to what they have to say, and I'd like to ask them to appoint an individual that can be on the selection committee for the consultant. So you have firsthand, you're going to educate and talk about what a master planning process looks like, get everybody on the same page, and then if there's additional items that they want to see that's, that are not in it, we can definitely include that in the RFP. From there, if they would select a person that would be on the selection committee, along with one of yourselves to be on that selection committee, probably your planning is only liaison, but if you have a preference, that's up to you guys. And then staff, couple staff members as well, and then when we get those proposals back, what we'll do is we'll have presentations from each of them outlining what it is that they would do for the city that include the public comments, the public sessions, the charades, the brainstorming that goes back and forth, and to be able to start outlining what it is that the community wants to see in our city. Does that help?
That makes more sense.
Okay.
I would think a discussion with regards to the overlay district needs to be in the form of a public meeting, workshop, where minutes are taken, so there's no misinterpretation of what's going on. I am adamantly opposed to having just meetings when it's not in a formal format.
Yeah, then there won't be no he said, she said.
There you go.
Exactly.
And.
Bad thing is, we're spending taxpayers' dollars on all these meetings, we're going to take you back and off our nights here.
We spent a lot of time with taxpayers' dollars on the current limits also.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, I wish we could get past the past, I mean, I realize I have no business downtown, it's not my money, I don't own any land down there, but I feel people's pain down there, but I wish we could get past the past, so we can work on the future. That's the, that's the only, I would just like to move to the future.
I, I agree with that, but however, I think they need to be public meetings with minutes taken, so that there's no misinterpretation. I mean, that's what happened first time around, and that's what will happen again if they're not formal meetings.
Well, I.
Nancy and I couldn't attend a meeting, because then we're in violation of the sunshine law. So you're excluding all of the aldermen from coming to these meetings. And I strongly oppose.
What could happen is what we can do, and if we could go and make them public meetings, that's, if you guys want to come, that's good, and what we would do is we would just go ahead and post them, and then that way, anyone that wants to come can come.
Post them.
But it wouldn't come out of taxpayers' pocket for us being.
Yeah, one of you said a minute ago, put it after your evening meetings.
I said that.
Okay, yeah.
Get my name.
But no, he, I think what Scott meant was, if you posted going to PNC that night as an open meeting, it wouldn't have cost taxpayers' money, then we could have come, not as a board, but as an individual at that point.
Okay.
Because we were present, I'm just asking, is.
If there's all of us there.
Could we have come if it was posted prior?
We're going to be in violation of sunshine law if we do that, right?
If I, if I may, yeah, the ordinance reads that if it's not a special meeting held by the Board of Aldermen, which is including a work session, or a formal regular meeting, the board is not necessarily going to be paying for that. So if you, it's, it's all in the way you post it, if you all just meet and talk about city business in a meeting session, like, starting saying, saying you aren't going to, it's not going to be utilizing taxpayers' dollars, and we'll post it, take minutes, and it'll be fine, it's not going to be any more expensive to the city.
What I would ask is, one of you hit on it a minute ago, and I'm sorry, I don't remember which one you said it, but I too am hoping that we can get beyond this, because I'm hearing a lot of people have a, they have a lot of emotion with it, and I definitely understand that, and the whole reason why we wanted to do this to begin with was to hear those people, and to hear what that emotion, and, and hear what their thoughts are, but I wouldn't have it come at the expense of the degradation of our staff, and that is exactly what happened tonight. And due to the fact that I did not want to cause any hardship, I did stay quiet, because I didn't want to cause any disagreement, but your staff are public servants, they're not slaves. If you can't respect people, then I would ask that your board stick up for your staff, because the things that were flung around tonight were not exactly on target, they were not exactly true, and staff took a hit, and that's not right. They're here just trying to do their job, trying to follow direction, and they want it to be a better community, because they do care, they're public servants, and I would ask for your support. That's all I have to say.
Like I said, we, we just need to get, I understand there's a lot of feelings, everybody's hurt over the last, but we need to work on, we, we can't fix the future, we keep talking about the past over and over and over, every time we, we come in here to do this, we keep talking about what happened and then, there, you know, okay, we understand outside of the board, that's the only thing I'm thinking.
I think they want to see a trail where it's showing that you are.
Well, I understand that, I'm.
Yeah, we stand for all of this, all of it, all at this time, right?
Oliver Totten?
I think I've spoken enough tonight, thank you.
Oliver Schaefer?
Just a couple things. One thing, not that there's anyone here, but congratulations to the Green Valley Cheerleaders for NCAA championship, well done, good job. Another thing is, I've been real relaxed with the skills, there's a reason for that. So, next week, we're going to throw the skills out after the meeting and start weighing in every meeting until this thing's over. Since this is a charity event, we're trying to raise money, I'm going to give you guys to the last meeting of May.
June's a good month, too.
Yeah.
Kind of the halfway point, right?
Well, Memorial Day weekend's coming up, so. And for Mr. Ryan, from what I understand, he's lost 20 pounds, is that still good, or lush?
Yes.
Good job. So, and I think that, I think what we ought to do with this is a loser ought to go in the next round of bucks.
Are you waiting?
I'm good, other than that, that's all I got, mayor. We got the, that's meeting day.
Looks like I'm going on a starfish. It looks like I'm going on a starvation. Rice and water.
I don't have any additional reports, and since there is not a need for the executive session, well, jury.
Wish I had twenty pounds to lose. We still need more than that. We're going to make Ryan be honest for another two weeks.
I said twice, I wish...